Three, two, one.
All the meetings ordered at six thirty. Is culture of community or interest and the general nature thereof? None? Deputations and delegations, none? Adoption of the minutes or the meeting agenda? Be it resolved, the council approved the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting dated May second as presented. And Gary? Any discussion? All in favor? Carried? Staff reports, my law enforcement, April report? Did you have anything or just just the written part? Everybody had a chance to read it? Any questions or thoughts? Okay.
Oh, that's just a reminder to people with the May, is it May ninth? For the free time for taking stuff in the dump? We had that in our notice when we got the taxes.
Very good.
We could have made that.
You'll have to look back because the notice is sticking there, but I maybe haven't. I know it's coming up here.
Yeah. Yeah. Excellent. Okay, thank you, Pat.
Okay, not too much for major library. We had a meeting on Tuesday and Kendra was supposed to come in, but she had ill and somebody was ill in the family. She couldn't make it. But on a positive note, we got funding for four student helpers for the summer, hires for the summer. So we're going to take them up on that. We have the audit for the libraries going well. There's one outstanding thing that we're having trouble locating, but we're working on that. And then that should be finished. And sorry, there's, there's, that's pretty much it. There was one other thing I was going to say, but I forgot. It wasn't very important anymore. But yeah, so that we're just, we're moving slowly, but we're moving forward anyway. So that's good. That's good news for the summer. So Tuesday and Friday. Oh, and we're going to hold off on hiring a CEO since there's only about a month left until Kendra's back. So we're not going to bother with the CEO hunting for one.
Any other questions for Gary? Okay. Be it resolved, the council accepted staff reports as presented, moved by Harry, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Item six, six, one, waive procedural bylaw to allow motions for mayor vacancy. Be resolved, the council suspended procedural bylaw to allow motions to be introduced regarding the mayor's vacancy. We have a mover? Pat, seconder, Jim? Discussion? Yes?
I'd like to see us go out to the public for this. The previous council never followed the list at all.
Under six two.
Motion to go to, to go to the public for, how would you say it? Expression of interest.
Yes, but can we bring that under six two? Right now, we're just suspending the procedural.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Here. Okay, six two, council to discuss options, appointment by or by election to fill the mayor's vacancy. As noted here, the appointment options include, one, appoint current member of council to fill the mayor's vacancy. Two, appoint from the 2022 election, the mayor candidates to fill the mayor vacancy. We have three noted, Angela Adsett, who had 101 votes, Rod Pryor with 99 votes, and Mike Harrison with 34 votes. And three, a request of expressions of interest from the public to fill the mayor's vacancy. Yes, Jim?
The motion that we use go with the option number two, appoint from the 2022 election, mayor candidates to fill mayor vacancy. And choosing the next, next one in line or the top of the list of number one.
So you're moving that?
My motion, yeah.
Got that recorded?
Moving it, may I second it?
Yeah, just have me read this over, make sure I got it right. You're fine, Jim. Okay, now, this one says. Well, it's free to you. Be it resolved pursuant to section two sixty-three, five, bracket one, bracket I of the municipal act, council for the corporation of town of Cobalt, appoint Angela Adsett as mayor. And that was moved by, that's what you wanted to move, Jim?
Yes, that's what I.
Okay. And Pat, you wish to second it? Okay, discussion.
No, I don't want to see this. I prefer us to go to the expression of interest. It just opens up a larger pool of people, all from the previous council didn't follow this list. They, they took applications and I think we should follow that and do it again.
Gary, Pat?
Well, at the election, people had a chance to come forward. And before, when we've gone for expression of interest, that's when we're replacing a counselor.
Counselor, mayor.
Yeah, but I think we should go with someone who has the experience and when we have, Angela has council experience. And I think that's very important that we need. And I believe that she's very fair. She's sharp, she knows her stuff. She knows the municipal handbook and all the rest of it inside note.
Yeah, I was, I'm not comfortable with voting for or deciding on who's going to be mayor from the public's interest. I believe we should go because the people pick these people, voted for these people. And I believe they're entitled to actually, Angela's next in line after Maida, right? So I, my personal thoughts would be that people, Town Cobalt chose this person. You know what I'm saying? Next in line to Gibson.
I think if we did open it up to the public, we'd end up having to vote on somebody that has no experience. Then we'd have to go through some of this training over again, spend more money on that.
Yeah.
No, you don't know that.
Then she puts her name in the pie.
Yeah, we can't.
Again, we could end up with a former mayor that wants to put their name in again. We don't know if he's going to put his name in or Andre Belanger or any of them, right?
Yes, Andrew.
My. Right, so a longer preamble. Over the past few months, we've seen significant public consultation that wasn't necessarily welcome is public bullying of council members during council meetings, online bullying, accusations, misinformation, and basically telling us that we have hidden agendas. I personally don't feel like being put in that position again. My first choice would be, despite the cost, to go to an election so that the people have who they want. Because I don't want any more of this. I don't want any more of this. Exactly. And so it's because of their actions that basically, it's because of their actions. It's because exactly the Cobalt taxpayer would be receiving the consequences of their actions. Because I don't want more bullying if I choose someone to be then accused of having some alternate motive. My, I'm still talking. My second choice, if we didn't do that, would be to go to the next person in line for the election because it was a very recent election and that the people did speak. But I'm tired of the bullying. I will not continue to put up with this bullying.
You're going to get that everywhere, Angela. We're public figures now.
Or Gary, Gary, she's talking. Go. Back to her at six forty-seven. So we have a motion on the table. Be it resolved that pursuant to section two sixty-three, five, one, one of the municipal act, council for the corporation of town of Cobalt, appoint Angela Adsett as mayor. And further, that the oath of office be administered at the regular council meeting on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Jim, seconded by Pat. Any further discussion?
Recorded vote?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Counselor Anderson. Or? Counselor Cooper.
Against.
Counselor Hughes.
For.
Counselor Starchuk.
For.
Counselor Wilcox, against. So, motion carried. Seven. Void for consideration. Oh, where's the rest of the package? Am I skipping something? Oh, I'm skipping a whole. Okay, thank you. We have a request for applicants. The Cobalt Water Supply Act, ASO, SO nineteen seventeen, C sixty-seven is provincial legislation that protects the town Cobalt's water supply. The water commission's mandate within the act is clearly defined in section five as having an important role in protecting the act and preserving the integrity of the water source. If you're interested in becoming a member of this important committee, please complete the application form. And that is the form that we've been using previously. So that will be put out for approval in our next meeting.
How many members are there? How many members sit in that committee?
Three. Three, three.
Four or five, I think. Five.
We'll double check it for you.
So you want this to be after a regular meeting on May sixteenth? On social media?
Oh, can we just go ahead? Do you want, do you want a direction from council tonight? Okay, council, shall we have that put out?
This is our most important committee.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Protect our waters.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's hugely important. Draft bylaw to establish tax ratios for twenty twenty-three. Whereas corporation of town of Cobalt's required to establish tax ratios pursuant to section three oh eight of municipal act two thousand and one as amended. And whereas the tax ratios determine the relative amount of taxation to be borne by each property class. Now, therefore, be resolved, council of corporation of town of Cobalt hereby enacts as follows, tax ratios for the municipality for twenty twenty-three, or as follows, residential or farm, one point zero, multi-residential, one point seven nine six eight, commercial, one point eight five, industrial, one point eight five, pipeline, one point four one nine four. Those are the same as last time. There's been no changes to those.
Yes.
That will come up.
Just a quick explanation. This is done every year as the, or the tax ratios. This is brought out as a tax change for every monthly year. So does this bylaw have to be revisited? And then created?
Thank you. So draft bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, being a bylaw to provide for the adoption of twenty twenty-three tax rates for municipal and school board purposes and to further provide penalty and interest for payments in default. Oh, that's going to be a bit of a read. But anyway. Whereas, as per section two ninety common practice, one of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended, for each year, a local municipality shall in the year preceding year prepare an adopted budget, including the estimates of all sums required for the operating and capital during the year for the purposes of the municipality. And whereas, as per section three oh seven two B of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended, the tax rates and the rates to raise the fees or charges shall be in the same proportion to each other as the tax ratios established under section three oh eight for the property classes are to each other. And whereas, as per section three oh eight, three of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended, the tax ratios are the ratios that the tax rate for each property class must be to the tax rate for the residential farm properties classes, where the residential farm property class rate is one. And despite this section, the tax ratio for the farmland property class and the managed forest property class prescribed under the assessment act. And whereas, section three twelve two of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, as amended, provides that for the purpose of raising the general local municipality levy, the council, a local municipality shall, after the adoption of the estimates for the year, pass a bylaw levying a separate tax rate as specified in the bylaw on the assessment in each property class in the local municipality rate available for local municipality purposes. And whereas, as per section thirty-four, two forty-five, one of the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, copy, or section twenty-five, as amended, a municipality may pass bylaws to impose a late payments charges for the non-payment of taxes or installment by the due date. And whereas, council has set tax ratios under the authority of bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, as adopted on the sixteenth of May, twenty twenty-three. And whereas, at the special meeting in council, April twenty-fifth, twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three budget was approved in the amount of three million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, which includes a capital budget of six hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, and an operating budget of three million, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, and which requires a levy for municipal purposes in the amount of seven hundred and eight, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And whereas, certain education taxes are prevented and various regulations and commercial and industrial education amounts have been requisitioned by the province. Now, therefore, the council of corporation of town of Cobalt hereby enacts as follows, one, that the tax rates for twenty twenty-three municipal and education purposes be hereby set as per schedule A here to attach and forming part of this bylaw, that all charges shall be added to the tax rule and shall become due and payable in two installments as follows. A, fifty percent of the levy for all classes shall become due and payable on the thirty-first day of August, twenty twenty-three. And B, fifty percent of the levy, levy for all classes shall become due and payable on the twenty-eighth day of September, twenty twenty-three. That non-payment of the amounts as noted on the date stated in accordance with the bylaw constitutes, constitutes a default and that all taxes of the levy for which are in default after the noted due dates shall be added a penalty of one point two five percent per month until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And four, that all taxes unpaid as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three shall be added a penalty at rate of one point two five percent per month for each month or fraction thereof in which the arrears continue. And that will be taken and read a third time, first, second, and third time and finally passed on the sixteenth of May.
Quick question about this?
Good, I hope I have a quick answer.
So was this just talking about the education that's paid in these two settlements? Or is this, this has kind of got fifty percent of your taxes paid in this month and then fifty the next month? Does that mean twenty-five and twenty-five? Because it's four payments a year, right, the taxes?
Yes, that's fifty percent is the balance to low standing because we're now past.
Yeah. Fifty percent is to be paid in August.
To go, and those are the two months that they'll be collecting.
Fifty and fifty is a hundred.
Well, a hundred percent of what's still outstanding, which are the next two installments.
It's not, okay. All right, thank you. Well, there's a quick answer.
One try, you know? Bylaw twenty twenty-three dash one five. Bylaw twenty twenty dash fifty to pay the user fees for the town of Cobalt facilities and services. You guys are doing it to me again. Whereas, the municipal act, SO two thousand and one, C twenty-five, section three ninety-one, allows municipalities to set user fees, bylaws to recover costs for providing certain services or facilities. And whereas, the municipality needs it experienced to pass a bylaw to adopt rates for users of its facilities or services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of corporation of town of Cobalt acts as follows, one, amending schedule A, environmental services with the following rate updates. Part one, water services, annual rates, residential water operating rate, five fifty-nine point four four. Multi, multi-residential operating rates, five fifty-nine, forty-four. Commercial water operating rate, four hundred and forty-seven, fifty-six. Commercial water operating rate, number two, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, sixteen cents. The institutional rate, two thousand and three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, sixty cents. And the water capital levy, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, forty-four cents. Our two service fees, use of the municipal fleet will follow MTO rates. And two, amending schedule B, protection to persons and property rates with the following rate updates, one, report fire regulation compliance, multi-residential, seventy-five dollars. Cost is per unit. Amending schedule C, administration rates with the following rate updates. One, property information certificate on a rush basis, meaning less than five calendar days notice, one hundred and fifty dollars. Reissuing a check, twenty dollars. Refund of payment, twenty dollars. Registration, hand delivery of notices, twenty-five dollars. Tax registration, registration payment into court, ten percent of the purchase price at port, five hundred dollars minimum. Tax registration, cancellation of tax arrears certificate, seventy-five dollars. Tax registration, tender opening and examination, four hundred dollars. That the said bylaw will come into force and effect on the day of its final passing. That will be taken a first, second, and third time and passed on the sixteenth of May. Steve, did you want to go through? The.
Some of the new items?
Some of the new items on, yeah.
Most of the new items here, a few of them there. Sorry about that. Schedule A, it's the environmental rate, so it's now showing the increase for as per the twenty twenty-three budget. And that's in schedule A here on page four. As it goes through the other items, it's administration fees is increased. So as an example here, under schedule B, a report fire regulation, compliance, multi-resident, seventy-five dollars. In there as well as, it is the same cost as the residential. Property information here, looking at C for user fees. Property information, a certificate, if it's a rush, a hundred and fifty dollars. To like reissue a check, hand delivery and notices, twenty-five dollars. Cancellation of tax arrears certificate, seventy-five. One of the other items here. Administration, the tendering, opening and examination, a tender opening requires attendance of two administration, administrative staff. Plus myself, the ball of paper takes one staff member takes approximately one to, one to two days to complete. And a whole fee, whereas two fifty is, I don't know, just to reapply administration costs.
I think that one's a good one. It's gone up a lot of work.
Yes.
Any other questions for Steve?
How many of those on average do we do a year?
Check with staff, exactly how many?
Bylaw twenty twenty dash fifty, being a bylaw to establish user fees for the town of Cobalt facilities and services. Okay. So that was fast stuff. Very good. That gets us down to the township of Montague. Country living at its best. At their regular meeting of council, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, they passed a motion and they're asking us for our support. And their where as municipally elected leaders do not have an appropriate accountability structure when it comes to perpetrating violence and harassment in the workplace. And whereas, a fundamental underlying principle of broadening diversity, equity, and inclusion in politics rests on assumption that the workplace is safe. And whereas, Bill five, the stopping harassment and abuse by local leaders act, would require counselors to comply with the workplace violence and harassment policies of the municipality they represent. Permit municipalities to direct the integrity commissioner to apply to the court to vacate a member's seat for failing to comply with the municipality's workplace violence and harassment policies, as well as restrict officials whose seat has been vacated from seeking immediate subsequent reelection. And whereas, over twenty municipalities have formally endorsed and communicated public support for Bill five. Five. And whereas, Bill five would both hold accountable and protect all municipal officials. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the township of Montague council express its support for Bill five, stopping harassment and abuse by local leaders act. Further, that this resolution be circulated to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, John Jordan, MPP for Lannard Frontenac Kingston, Scott Reid, MP for Lannard Frontenac Kingston, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and all municipalities. So that will be before us. We've got two weeks to think about that. We've got two weeks to think about that one. Lastly.
Has anyone looked into Bill Five more like this? Almost goes in a circle? Or am I just reading it wrong?
I think that would be in order, I think Gary's quite right and you too, Pat. I think at the present time, the integrity commissioners and their effort are directed at specific areas. And not necessarily all municipalities are under that umbrella. And I think this is trying to correct that, but I will defer to a staff report for our next meeting. See if we can get that straight.
Verify it a little bit more.
Yeah. Very much so. Which brings us to DSAB. Paramedic Services Week, twenty twenty-three. Dear city member, member municipality. The third week of May every year is dedicated to the recognition of the paramedic profession across North America by municipalities, paramedic organizations and associations, as well as other levels of government. There are sixty-three full-time and part-time paramedics that serve the district of Timiskming at the present. In addition to support staff located in three bases across the vast geographic area. Paramedics dedicate their lives to public service and their skills often make the difference when community members are at their most vulnerable. In recognition of their service and commitment, we kindly ask that you consider proclaiming May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh as Paramedic Services Week in your city or municipality. Attached, you will find a draft proclamation. And that's on the reverse. You want me to read that out too? Just for you. Okay. We will take that under our next meeting. And we, the paramedics, I've had them a few times. Yes.
Been there, done that.
Yes. So we have a draft motion to begin. Oh, there's some second on the second page, yes. Be it resolved, council accept the items for council consideration as presented. Mover, Jim, seconder, Harry. Discussion. All in favor? Carried. No unfinished business, no new business, no closed meeting, no business arising from a closed meeting, which brings us to my personal favorite, the motion to adjourn.
There's all the rulers going around about the tax increase for the taxes in the water and sewage. Do you have the, have the number, the percentage? Yep. Have the percentage of it?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we voted that.
Twelve, eight and eight. On water, capital and sewer cap or water capital and water operations.
Do you remember exactly what the average dollar increase would be?
On a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, it was eleven forty-seven a month, it was like a hundred and forty-nine a year.
Fourteen dollars a month, I agree.
Stephen, we'll get back to you with the exact numbers. Yes.
Just one thing that may have passed your notice when you were going through the air that, you know, like we cut and cut and cut and cut. Another place we did cut was that councils agreed that we've rolled back our increase for council pay this year. So we, so just to let you know that we did, we did our best and we're helping out where we can do so. Oh, thank you, I'm taking you up on that.
Sometime.
Sometime, yes.
Right then. All comments are done, we're good. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at seven oh nine P M. This is remover, Jim and Harry. That's one of the few we don't have to discuss, all in favor? Harry.